All right, well, welcome, everyone. We have been in closed session for the last hour, and this is the continuation of the Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 6, 2021. Charlie, if you can call the roll.
Here.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Roby?
Here.
Present.
Here, we have a quorum. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on down to Item 3 in our Agenda Communications. A few items in the President's comments this evening. First of all was regarding the Board election and the seating. As many of you know, we had planned to seat our new Board of Education members tonight. However, that will now happen at a special Board meeting on this coming Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. The meeting will be shown live on Zoom as other Board meetings have been during the pandemic. There was some confusion stemming from the overlapping dates of our meetings and the county clerk's certification of the final results, which will officially happen tomorrow. We did get some ferrying communication from the county clerk's office, which was why we were, again, initially hoping we would be able to do it tonight. So on Wednesday, we will seat incumbent Board Vice President, Rod Westfall, and Board Members-Elect Dr. Kathy Baxter, Barb Sidon, and Tony Galan. Again, welcome to each of them. Each will serve a four-year term. Mr. Rick Todd preliminarily led the race for the fourth open seat, but Ms. Galan ended up taking that spot after the clerk's vote was finished. The usual counting of all mail-in and provisional ballots on April 20th. We will also say goodbye to our exiting Board members, Board Secretary Dave Cook, and Board Members, Dr. Mike Roby and Mr. Bob Smith, on Wednesday during their final meeting. Also, this evening and in a few minutes, Mr. Westfall and Mr. Hernandez will present awards on behalf of the Board of Education to three very, very special people who have given extraordinary service to our district and community. These will be the Best Eichelberger, the Ira Jones, and the Cheryl Ricardi Awards. So on behalf of the entire Board, I extend our most sincere congratulations, appreciation, and admiration for their efforts, most especially during this, what has turned out to be an incredible year. We also want to congratulate the 44 staff members who received a Board of Education Award of Excellence this year. Those winners were all named in a press release on our website. Also, this evening, you may have read or heard about, or even participated in, a rally earlier tonight to promote the need for greater diversity in District 202, including the plan to distribute the student self-identification survey. First and foremost, we would support, we support everyone's right to peacefully assemble and share their views. That is certainly democracy in action, and it is always welcome in District 202. Secondly, we agree with the need to increase and improve our diversity of staff and in our curriculum. We have been working on this very issue for many years. Ironically, many of those who organized and participated in the rally tonight are part of our Cultural Competency Committee, which plays a key part in our ongoing diversity work. And yes, we acknowledge that the student survey could have been distributed earlier this year. The committee did a great job creating it, and it was ready to go late last fall. I want to kind of explain why that was not done earlier this year. It was placed in priority order as we focused last fall and winter on getting students back to in-person learning, as well as creating the most effective remote learning possible that we implemented throughout this year. Those were our top priorities. In addition, we were also focusing on doing the work necessary to open a new elementary school this fall, this coming fall. And so by the time those two things were accomplished, the Board elections were upon us. And at that point, I felt that it was fair and best to allow the new Board members to be seated and to also have an exposure to the survey and the work that had been done before we moved forward with the survey. All that said, we have created a survey, a schedule, as Dr. Wood promised the committee. The student survey will be distributed on May 12, after we share the information with parents. And we look forward to continuing to work together with everyone involved to create a learning environment that exposes students to the value of differences, broadens their perspective, and prepares them to shape the world. And finally, this evening, we will have some guests with us that to accept some award, awards, as I mentioned earlier, that would have been given during the spring as part of our regular Awards of Excellence ceremony. That obviously couldn't happen, but we did wanted to recognize and honor those outstanding staff members. Our guests are here in the boardroom with us, and they will be leaving after the meeting is, after their portion of the meeting is concluded. We assure the audience watching this meeting online that our guests are socially distanced within the capacity limits of the boardroom and are wearing masks as requested. So with that, we do not have anything from student ambassadors this evening. So jumping on to Item 4, Recognitions. 4.01 Board Salutes. Who in my Board colleagues have any board salutes for this evening?
This, Mr. Kerber, would not, well, be a joint Board salute, but also superintendent salute for our three outgoing Board of Education members. I would like to thank and publicly recognize Mr. Dave Cook, Dr. Mike Roby, and Mr. Bob Smith. I would like to thank them for all their time and service to the district and to the Board of Education. They've done an outstanding job.
Thank you, and I would just like to add on to that on behalf of the Board of Ed, to thank Dave. Again, you've been with us since 2015. Again, when we last appointed someone to the Board prior to bringing on Teresa earlier this year, and then you were elected once after that and have done incredible service to the Board of Ed and the district, both as a Board Member, as a Chair of the Site and Finance Committee. And we want to thank you for all of that. It's been very appreciated. Your time as Board Secretary as well has been something that has been very helpful to us and to me, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Mike, you, again, were elected in 2017 and have served with distinction, bringing your exceptional expertise in education and that thought process to everything that we've done. And we really do appreciate that. Your time serving on curriculum especially, but also on PPA has been, again, of great value to us. And I know I've learned a lot from you and your experience and expertise in education. And so I want to thank you for your time with us as well. And Bob, not the last, not the least, to say the least, the last for least, the last. But thank you also, again, been with us for one term since 2017. And again, with Mike, your expertise in education, your expertise in the school district as well has been truly of great value, especially your work in the last two years in sharing curriculum. I think we've made great strides during that time because of, you know, your hard work and dedication and the amount of additional time and energy you spent in that. So again, on behalf of the Board of Ed, thank you very much for your service. All right, and now I will jump down to 4.02, Special Recognitions, and we will turn it over to Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. May I invite out this? Here, be very careful stepping over there. Tonight, it's my privilege and pleasure to introduce Amanda as the winner of the 6th Annual Cheryl Ricardi Exceptional Student Service Award, which honors a school-level certified student service worker who exhibits extraordinary dedication to students. Cheryl started working in District 202 in 1996 as a social worker. She lost a courageous two-year battle with breast cancer in 2012. She worked at all school levels, but her passion was working with high school students, according to one of her coworkers, Cindy Cook, who helped organize this award. During her District 202 career, Ricardi also initiated several unique programs, including an after-school breakdance group for at-risk teens, the Catalyst Program to all District 202's high schools, and the annual Yellow Ribbon Run to raise money for suicide awareness. Ricardi also presented at professional workshops and continued to work after getting ill with dignity, grace, courage, and tremendous strength. So tonight, we certainly are very proud to present this award to Amanda as she meets that high bar that Cheryl set. From her nomination, I will read that Amanda is recognized as a go-getter. By the way, she's from Ridge Elementary School. Okay. She is recognized as a go-getter, a leader, tireless, phenomenal. These are a few words to describe Ridge Elementary School social worker Amanda Lulek. This Lulek arrived in District 202 only three years ago. Yet in those three years, she's made a long-lasting impression on students at Ridge and across the district. Some of her accomplishments include leading the district in trainings for social emotional learning, suicide prevention, implementing the Panorama Survey, supervising university social work interns for the district, beginning her second master's program for educational leadership this coming summer, volunteering regularly with royal family for fostered and at-risk teenagers. Recently, she could be found greeting students returning to the building after being in remote learning for almost a year. Before the pandemic closed our schools, you would find Ms. Lulek on a ladder, never a good idea, on a ladder posting leaves to a kindness tree on a main hallway. Each Ridge student had a leaf on that tree. At one point, Ms. Lulek realized parents were struggling to help their students in remote learning during the pandemic. So she created a webinar with useful tips and tricks so that parents could help their students succeed in remote learning, since she couldn't see students or parents in person. Ms. Lulek is constantly challenging Ridge staff to fill her office for food drives or ride with her to motivate students at home. She coordinates guest speaker specialists to train staff in specialized programming and implemented a student mentee and staff mentor school-wide program at Ridge. She creates celebratory opportunities for students and staff to infect with positive energy. Ridge Principal Dr. Stacy DiVittata put it best, "If our world were made up of more of her, we would be closer to true world peace." Congratulations.
Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Hi, I'm Rod Westfall, Vice President of the Board of Education, also the Chairman of the Awards of Excellence Committee. I would like to thank my fellow committee members, Heather Roach, Teresa Howard Collins, Bonnie Lutter, and our other Board Ambassador, Michelle Smith, for being part of the process to select winners of the Awards of Excellence. Our first award tonight is the Richard Ira Jones Award. The Ira Jones Award, created in 1986, is named for Richard Ira Jones, the proprietor of Jones Hardware, which is in downtown, which was in downtown Plainfield for many years. Mr. Jones was a member of the District 202 Board of Education from 1936 until 1972, including the last 15 years as president. Wow. He also served as a member of several other public boards, including the Fire District and various community service organizations. Tonight, we are very proud to present the Ira Jones Award to a Plainfield community legend and pillar, Mr. Ron Kazmar. Hard to quantify or capture all the good Mr. Kazmar has done for his community. But here are just a few of the many examples of his selfless service. Ron has served eight years as a member of the District 202 Board of Education, including four years as the Board President, 20 years as the District 202 Treasurer as an unpaid volunteer, Chairman of the District Site and Finance Committee, Chairman and Member of the YMCA Giving Gala along with his wonderful wife Kathy, which raised and donated hundreds of thousands of dollars to numerous community service agencies. They then created a different organization with a similar purpose called the Friends for Charitable Giving, which raised and donated more than $110,000 in its inaugural year in 2020. Ron is also a member of the Plainfield Lions Club. Ron and Kathy also donate countless hours and privately support many groups and charities in our community. They built the Krish, how do you pronounce that big R?
Krish.
Krish, for the altar. I need to go to church more often. They built the Krish for the altar and serve as mass greeters at St. Mary's Immaculate Church. Ron, on behalf of us, thank you for all your continued service, and we will miss you as treasurer, but we know that you'll be here and still be a contributor to our community.
Thank you very much. I know there's other recipients, but I'm probably one of the few recipients that actually knew Ira when he was running Jones Hardware.
We'll take a picture. Oh, that's my fellow members. Get a quick picture. Take two of them. Kaz, you're getting one. Out of one, do it up.
I couldn't tell you.
You're right. You stand for a meal.
I was gonna say. Here we go. One more, we can see in your eyes. Okay. Congratulations. Okay, and this next award is the Best Eichelberger Award. The Best Eichelberger Award and the Ira Jones Award both honor community members for volunteerism and extraordinary community service. The Board of Education created the Eichelberger Award in 2009 to honor those who embody Best Eichelberger spirit of community service. Mrs. Eichelberger, a Plainfield area icon who died in February of 2009, was renowned for her passion for volunteerism. She served nearly 26 years on the Board of Education, then continued as the one of the two Board ambassadors until her passing. She also served as a member or director of numerous community organizations, including the Will County United Way, the CW Avery YMCA, the Rotary, the St. Mary's Immaculate Parish, and Plainfield High School Central Campus Athletic and Band Booster Groups, among numerous others. Tonight, we present the 2021 Best Eichelberger Distinguished Service Award to a truly deserving community member, parent, businessperson, leader, and servant. The award goes to Board of Education Secretary, Mr. David Cook. Mr. Cook has served District 202 in many public and private capacities, including parent volunteer at Walker's Grove Elementary, Liberty Elementary, Heritage Grove Middle School, Ira Jones Middle School, JFK Middle School. He's been through the Cape Organization. He was a baseball and soccer coach with the Plainfield Park District, as a football coach with the Plainfield Junior Cats and Plainfield Saints Youth Football Organization. He also served at District 202, teachers and substitute taught in our district. As a District 202 Board Member since 2015, when he was appointed to fill an open seat, and then from 2017 today, after winning the recent election. Dave has chaired the Board Site and Finance Committee and has been a valued member of our Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Cook. Let's go. Everyone come on over. Family, get in there. Part of it.
All right, well, again, congratulations to all of our award winners tonight and to, again, the 44 other staff who received the Awards of Excellence this year. This is really one of the, one of the highlights for the Board of Ed to get to do this every year. And thank you, Rod, for chairing the process again this year and leading it to such a successful conclusion in the midst of the pandemic and needing to do things a little differently this year. But again, I think it was great and it seems like sufficiently surprised both of you gentlemen. So that was what we were hoping for and certainly made it much more worthwhile as well. So, all right, we will jump on down to Public Comment, Item 5.01. Given Tom Hernandez time to get back to his office, but we received four total public comment for this meeting. Again, we will read those in their entirety in just a moment. We will, as we always do, based on Board policy, limit each individual comment to no more than two minutes and no more than 20 minutes total. Although, again, since we only have four this evening, the 20 minutes total should not be an issue. Mr. Hernandez will read these to, again, avoid any appearance of impropriety. He will read them in their entirety minus any appropriate redactions to protect the confidential nature of our students. The Board of Education members have all received copies of these as well for a full review, and they will also be posted online minus appropriate redactions as well with the other materials from tonight's meeting. So with that, Mr. Hernandez, are you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right, turn it over to you.
First up tonight is from Megan Bredesen. "I just wanted to thank each of you for your continued hard work to keep our kids and our amazing 202 teachers, administrators, and support staff safe. My child went back to school last week, and I felt confident in this because of the safety and caution our district has moved forward with in every decision. Thank you for not caving to the loud voices trying to drown out the many more of us who are thankful and grateful for your consideration of health and safety first. I trust moving forward, every decision will have the same care involved. A very appreciative parent." Next is from Darcy and Derek Ridge. "My husband and I want to thank you again for putting the safety of our kids, teachers, and community first. Our two students went in person for the first time since last March, and they love being back. As parents, our number one worry this last year was keeping our children safe and healthy. My husband and I were relieved when the district made the decision to start remote and stay remote until January. We know navigating these uncharted waters has been extremely stressful. We're so thankful for our teachers who have been amazing through all of this. They've spent countless hours working and reworking their lesson plans. Thank you to the staff at Lincoln and Ira, who continue to go above and beyond. We are forever grateful to our district's administrators, Board of Education, teachers, and staff." Next is from Michelle Greenfield-Sliwa. "I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved in making decisions for 202. I appreciate the science that went into every decision 202 has made. I'm proud of the Board and Dr. Abrel for doing what was right versus caving to pressure from a small but loud group of parents. As a parent working from home and overwhelmed, I too wish things could be normal. However, they are not, and the way 202 has made safety a priority has made me proud. My children have always been in District 202. However, we outgrew our house and moved last year. We were torn between staying in Plainfield or moving to a neighboring district. I'm so glad we stayed and so thankful for the district administration. COVID times have been unprecedented, and I'm thankful to Dr. Abrel, his staff, our Board of Education, and especially our rock star teachers. Teaching remotely and in a hybrid model is so difficult, but they have been nothing short of amazing. Thank you." And finally, from John and Julie Senka. "Dear Dr. Abrel, Dr. Fink, and the PSD 202 Board, my family and I would like to express our gratitude to Dr. Abrel and Dr. Fink for their communication about recent changes in the school district. Your willingness to listen, respond, and communicate in a timely manner are appreciated by our family. Both Dr. Abrel and Dr. Fink clearly communicated and kept in touch with our family despite the fact that we are only one family out of the thousands served in 202. We truly felt our concerns were heard, appreciated, and acted upon. It's easy to forget that we are the fifth-largest school district in Illinois and that 202 encompasses so many students and families, but we never felt like a number. We truly felt respected by our district-level administration. We thank Dr. Abrel and Dr. Fink for treating us in such a respectful and responsive manner. We appreciate having administration that cares." That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Appreciate that, as always. All right, moving down to Item 6 on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. So first off, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add 6.08 approval of the Certified and Non-Certified Personnel agendas, both as presented. So can I get a motion?
Motion.
Heather's motion? Second. Bob's second. Charlie?
Ms. Justin?
Yes.
Ms. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes. So now we have eight items on the consent agenda, and I will read all of these, and we will take them all with one vote. Item 6.01, Approval of the Regular Session Minutes from March 22nd, March 22nd, 2021, and April 12th, 2021. 6.02, Approval of the Renewal of Membership for Plainfield High School Central Campus, Plainfield East High School, Plainfield North High School, and Plainfield South High School in the Illinois High School Association for the 2021-2022 school term. Item 6.03, Approval of a Field Trip for Plainfield High School Central Campus Band and Choir for a trip to Orlando, Florida on March 26th, 2022 through April 1st of 2022. 6.04, Approval of a Field Trip for Plainfield East High School Music Department for a trip to Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida on March 27th, 2022 through April 1st of 2022. 6.05, Approval of the Closed Session Minutes from November 9th, 2020, November 23rd, 2020, December 14th, 2020, and February 8th of 2021, and pass the motion that they remain closed as recommended following a review by the Closed Session Minutes Committee. Item 6.06, Approval of the Closed Session Minutes from October 13th of 2020, October 26th of 2020, January 11th of 2021, January 25th of 2021, February 22nd of 2021, March 22nd of 2021, and the special session of February 11th, 2021, and to pass the motion that they be opened as recommended following a review of the Closed Session Minutes Committee. Item 6.07, Approval of the Destruction of Audio Tapes of District 202 Board of Education Closed Sessions from April 3rd of 2019 through September 19th. from April 3rd of 2019 through September 19th of 2019. And then the item 0.08 that we just added, approval of the certified and non-certified personnel agendas, both as presented. Make a motion.
My motion.
Rod's motion?
Second.
Dave's second. Charlie?
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes. Motion passes. And now we will jump down to item seven for Action, Site, and Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to Mr. Cook for one final time.
Carver, thank you. The Site and Finance Committee met last Wednesday, April 21st. The committee is bringing eleven items to the Board tonight for its approval. We also have two presentation, financial presentations we're going to be doing tonight. But as always, we will begin with the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Casmar?
Last time, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Give you some screen time, right? Veteran at this, Mr. Casmar. You're not old, you're a veteran. You know the routine.
All righty. The Treasurer's Report for the month of March 2021. We started out with a beginning cash and investment balance of $134,025,600. We had revenues of $11,331,336. Expenditures of $25,090,097. Living us an ending cash and investment balance of $120,478,346, which of $103,608 was invested as shown on the cash report. That's it. Casmar, on behalf of the Site and Finance Committee, I'd like to thank you for your twenty-plus years of service as the Board of Education's Treasurer.
Thank you, my pleasure.
7.02, the approval and acceptance of the Treasurer's Report, that's my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes. Motion passes.
7.03, approval of the payment of bills in the amount of $7,666,289.87. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Crowe?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
7.04, approval of the resolution or expenditure of funds prior to the adoption of the FY 2022 budget. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Anyone have any questions about this? It's pretty standard, we do it every year, but just want to make sure there's no questions on the Board. All right, Charlie?
Roby?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes, item passes.
7.05, approval of a resolution to permanently transfer funds from working cash to tort. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Crowe?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes, motion passes.
Now we will go to the two presentations that we have planned for tonight. Mr. Abregash?
Rod?
Great, I will go ahead and share my screen here to start with the first one. But I would just like to echo everybody's comments on the great job done by Mr. Casmar here. And you know you've done a fantastic job when you get a round of applause after a Treasurer's Report. So I don't think I've ever seen that before, but thank you. Is everybody able to see my screen right now?
Not yet.
There we go.
Now we got it.
Okay. So looking here at our five-year financial forecast, our goals here have been to develop and implement a responsible, sustainable financial plan while keeping high-quality education programs. We pride ourselves in the low property taxes that we have as a district. We would like to implement a balanced operating budget each year without a structural deficit and maintain our positive recognition status, which is the highest financial rating. The Illinois State Board of Education provides two school districts in the state. A quick look at where we get our revenue from, and this will look familiar to some of the information we discussed in prior months. But we rely about fifty-six percent on property taxes. Just under thirty percent comes from our educational-based funding from the state of Illinois. Federal revenue makes up six percent of our budget. And then the other remaining nine or ten percent comes from other local and state revenue. The big levers that impact our revenue, the tax levy is impacted by the Consumer Price Index, and every time that goes up or down one percent, it would equal a change of about $1.5 million to the district. Every $1 million of new property is about $50,000 for the district. And that makes up our tax levy and the tax dollars that we get. The evidence-based funding, the EBF from the state of Illinois, comes in two waves. We get a base funding minimum of $91.4 million. And then there's another $4 million that comes in tier-one and tier-two funding. That is because we do not locally have enough dollars to support the needs of our students, so we get a little bit of extra dollars from the state. However, this year, due to COVID, the state froze the tier funding and only paid districts their base funding minimum. So there's two scenarios we'll talk about going forward over the five years. One involves the tiered dollars that our district is missing coming back in, and EBF continuing to grow. The other is if the tier money continues to be frozen. Just to look at how that Consumer Price Index has impacted the district historically and what we use going forward, you can see it hovers right around two percent most years. It's been as high as 2.3. Back in 2015 and 16, it was 0.8, 0.7. This year, with the pandemic, was 1.4. So we felt pretty comfortable keeping with the number used in prior years at two percent moving forward. Looking at our expenditures, like most school districts, salaries and benefits make up just under, just right around eighty percent of our total expenses. Ten percent would be purchased services. Other objects, capital outlay, supplies make up the remaining portion of our expenses. But as a lot of school districts and all school districts show, that the expenses are in the people that are here to educate the students and to help with the administration and in support of the district. Looking at the expenditures, when salaries increase by one percent, it hits our budget about $1.7 million. A one percent increase in insurance is just about $370,000. Now, one change you'll notice is our five-year capital improvement plan. With recent news of the different ESRS and stimulus funding coming from the federal government, we know that we are able to restructure how we are doing our capital projects planned from what was presented several months ago. So instead of using outdated numbers that we knew were incorrect, what I've done here is budgeted for a couple large HVAC product projects using our grant dollars, and then put a goal to cap our capital improvements the next three years, right around $8 million. And the reason we chose that number is, back when we presented the five-year capital improvement plan, the Board had said that they were looking for a little bit more of a sustainable number that we could look at each year instead of kind of these wild up-and-down years of capital spending. So what we'll do is, Mr. Gonzalez and I will go back and then look at what the main projects are that have to happen each year, and then what additional projects we can move off of the unplanned list into these years, really aiming to have a cap of that $8 million each year. We used the contracts from the Association of Plainfield Teachers, or APT, for the salary increases there, and then the Plainfield Association of Support Staff, or PASS. These are the projections we used to drive the salaries in the long term. Health insurance, we used a three percent annual increase for future years. We kept department budgets at their current allocations, as well as building budgets at their current allocations. The first scenario we'll look at is adjusted for a flat EBF with just the base funding minimum. That would be adjusted for the FY 21 budget. And what we did there is we looked at how we're projecting to finish the year instead of just how we are anticipating, or where we budgeted for and anticipated for at the start of the year. Our EBF dollars, here, we receive only the base funding minimum with no tier, but we do receive 100% of categorical payments. What we see here is that when we use the ESRS money in FY 22 and 23, we finish the year projected, you know, a surplus of $5.9 million. Next year, in two years, we're looking at a deficit right around $2 million. But the lack of tier dollars, if the state doesn't resume those, really starts to hit our district. And that's because districts like us rely on tier dollars pretty heavily. You can see that go to a $9 million deficit in 2024, a $12 million deficit in '25, and this is $16.7 million deficit in FY 26. We look at fund balance as a percentage of the monthly expenditures. We would start at about a 47% fund balance, but we would see that deteriorate down to a 36% fund balance at the end of FY 26. And again, this is a kind of a bleak scenario where the state does not resume the tier funding over the course of these years. But it's important to look at the impact that the state has on our finances. And then here's just a quick chart and where our fund balance would be. We project we'd end the year, this year, at $156 million. But by FY 26, that fund balance would fall to $127 million. Looking at the next scenario where we resume the tier funding, what we've done is we've put a modest increase into the growth then of evidence-based funding with, which would be a two percent increase from ISB, and then use similar budget projections and categorical projections going forward. Here you can see it's, we're much more balanced and non-structural. That means that if we needed to adjust out some of this surplus and deficit dollars, we could. We project next year we'd end with a $4.9 million surplus, $3.8 million surplus in '23. We'd have a $1 million deficit in '24, $2.9 in '25, and $4.8 in FY 26. But again, if we were to see these numbers grow, the deficit continue to trend in this direction, we don't see other revenues start to bounce back, like interest rates and other things that have hit our bottom line. That's when we may look at that $8 million capital plan and start to pull back on some of the extra projects. Another thing that's important to note, when you look at the projected finish of FY 21, originally, we were talking about a deficit, including the new building, of about $30 million. We're trending in a much more positive direction right now. A lot of that comes from the impact of the negotiations we've had with some of our vendors, such as our transportation company, where we held off the full payments until we resumed busing the students. And we look like we'd be coming in closer to a $22 million deficit instead of a $30. And again, that number seems staggering, but that does include the cost of the new building. And then when we add in the financing that we did for the capital projects through the bond sale, that's included, and that would drive that deficit down to an $8.8 million deficit. So overall, we're coming in much better than we thought. I shouldn't say much better. You know, we're not in a great financial position this year, but we're surviving the pandemic well and better than anticipated. In this scenario, you can see our fund balance really holds steady from a 47.6% end of this year. And in FY 26, we're still right there at 46.18%. So we say that right between five and six months of expenditures on hand. And again, you see our fund balance grows modestly over these projections, finishing FY 26 at $162 million. That is really the look at the two ways that our finances could project for the year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
No, I don't think there's any questions. Thank you.
Let me stop sharing here. There you go. And then the next presentation here that I will pull up will be a lot more brief. And this is just a look at our initial plan for the ESRS dollars over the next couple of years, and then kind of the next steps we're going to take. So let me begin this slideshow here. So this is just kind of a 50,000-foot view on the ESRS dollars and what we can do with them. Through ESRS 2, we will receive, we know, $6.68 million. And ESRS 3 is projecting to be $15 million. So between the two, we're looking at a total of $21.69 million through this ESRS grants that are coming out. There are a lot of restrictions with these dollars. They can only be used on COVID-related expenditures. A minimum of 20% of the expenses must be used academically. Funds must be used by the end of FY 23. We are still awaiting more guidance in terms of what dollars can and cannot be used on low-income schools and kind of a consistent funding of those schools. And then as always, ISB has not put final guidance out yet. So we're, the plan is contingent on the appropriate funding of ESRS monies and the stipulations or requirements that come with these dollars from the federal government and the state. Right now, our plan, and Dr. Wood will go more into detail, but an enhanced summer school option, focus on student achievement, computers to keep students one-to-one on needed HVAC and building improvements. And the reason we've targeted some of these bigger HVAC projects with the dollars, the one thing we've learned through COVID, and I shouldn't say the one, but one of the biggest things we've learned in the Buildings and Grounds Department is the importance of HVAC and air quality. So this will be looking at some of the bigger, more neater HVAC systems that need to be improved in the buildings. Then we'll also be looking at additional cleaning supplies, materials, and PPE as needed. As part of the requirements of these dollars, and Mr. Hernandez will put more information on the website in a release out. But the district would welcome community feedback on this plan or other ideas they may have for use of these dollars. Other comments can be sent to feedback@psd202.org. And, you know, we will happily review all of those. And this plan will be put on the website as well before a final plan will be brought back to the Board. And I promised it would be shorter, so are there any questions now on this presentation?
Just one point of clarification, Tony. So this is all reimbursement process with the state, correct? It's not like it's giving us the money and we can spend it. We have to actually spend it and then ask for reimbursement, submit for reimbursement, correct?
Yes, yes. These are dollars that we have to spend, then apply for the grant dollars to be sent to the district. And with that, we have to put backups in, including receipts and purchase orders for all the money we've expended as we do this. So this is more of a rebate, so to say, of dollars than it is, you know, having those dollars put into our account right away.
Thanks, sir.
Then I will go ahead and stop sharing the screen and pass it back over.
We'll proceed to 7.08, approval of operations and maintenance bids as follows. Roofing, $258,385. Floor slab repair, $871,000. And tennis court resurfacing at $112,000. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes, motion passes.
7.09, approval of the resolution lease purchase agreement with Central States Bus Sales Incorporated for $807,281.40 with anticipated $192,000 final payment by Central States Bus Sales Incorporated or purchased back. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Crowe?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes, motion passes.
7.10, approval of the purchase of the funding resources through curriculum and instruction for the 2021-2022 school year. MS Software adoption, GoInformative, $28,690.20 a year. Elementary handwriting resources, K through 5, at $26,923.50. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes. Motion passes.
7.12. Approval of the acceptance of donations as submitted. That is my motion.
Day's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
7.14. Approval of resolution regarding intent to implement full-day kindergarten for all students for the 2021-2022 school year. That is my final motion.
Day's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And with that, again, one final time, thank you, Mr. Cook, for your service and everything that you have done, site and finance. All right, moving on to item eight, for Action Curriculum and Technology Committee. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Rouch. Last Wednesday, we were given an update on the kindergarten handwriting, which was just passed, $26,923.50, and Go informative software, $26,620.20. We had a presentation that evening by the Digital Learning Subject Area Presentation. Dr. Woods, would you please share that on one screen?
Sure.
That is...
Sure, I'm sharing my screen now. Can we see that, the Digital Learning Subject Area Committee? The full presentation is available online. This is just a summary. We were fortunate that we had members of our Digital Learning Subject Area Committee come give a report to our Board of Education Curriculum and Technology. This committee has a representative from every single school, grades can K through 12. We had six members present on Wednesday, and really, their purpose is to evaluate, learn, implement best teaching practices. You know, blended learning really is combining in-person with the computer. Nowadays, if you walk in our schools, you'll see one classroom, all the students are using a computer, the other classroom, half the students are using a computer, and the other classroom, none of the students are using a computer. All of that is fine, but really, it's the perfect blend of what works to help our students meet their needs and their goals. And so this committee meets 10 times a year. What they do is they really design professional development and review and recommend software, and then update our professional model. They read a book study, they recommended to our committee that there were seven must-keep software items that we had, four that needed to be eliminated, and five that we're going to reevaluate in a year. So this is a process that will continue year after year, and then continue to really fine-tune our software, and then provide professional development and design that for our teachers. And so we've had things, you know, last summer, our entire staff were trained on Google and some of the other applications that they would like. We will have our Google Summer Summit again this summer, so we'll have, we'll be pushing that information out to staff in addition to other things around our primary software items that we use, and then we do professional development around that software that we have. So that is just a big picture, you know, overview of our Digital Learning Committee. I don't know if there's any questions from our board members.
Any questions at all? I mean, they've done a tremendous lot of work this last summer, this year, and so yeah, this is an outstanding job, and just want to say thank you again. Dr. Wood has been very involved behind us, so again, thank you. We had another presentation that evening. It's the Multi-Tier System Support, MTSS, the summer school program, FY '21, '22, and beyond. Information was shared with us to close students' gaps and deficiencies. Dr. Wood, you also had a slide worse there, too?
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith. We have, once again, the entire presentation is available through the committee reports. This is just a few slides we consider significant. As Mr. Arbogast had mentioned, federal dollars have been allocated to education, really to address the pandemic for us. And so we are going to focus on our summer programming and then moving on. This is a problem as we continue to support our kids, it's just not resolved in the summer. It takes time. And so some high-level pieces of this are our summer programming, which we'll go over in a second. There's no cost to families except a one dual credit class. Our partnership with JJC requires that. It's a $50 cost for just one of the courses, but there'll be no cost to families, and transportation will be provided to eligible students. And so that means if you're further than 1.5 miles away from the location, then you would receive transportation. Moving forward, we will continue to invest in technology, professional development, and programming both after school and during the day, and then staffing. And so really, you know, to enhance the preparation of our students for next school year and beyond, we have academic offerings for our summer school, summer programming, which includes just a normal summer school, which students and families think of 9/12. In addition to, you know, our traditional summer school extended school year, that's listed, our bridge program, targeted academic assistance and enrichment classes. What we have here is if you see if there are, you know, the stars or asterisks by them, those are new programs. So these are six new programs that we plan to implement between the summer and then FY ' '22 and beyond. Our bridge programs really, in the middle school focus from fifth to sixth grade, they are open to other students. And then our bridge program at high school is focused on Algebra I as one course, and then English is another course for that. So this week, families can expect communication from their school related to these programs. They, just a few key pieces. It's been a long year, you know, and so it is contingent on staffing and student interest. So we have the programs in place, we posted these positions, we're filling these positions. We are focused on students that we've targeted, so every school has targeted students, and then we'll have open enrollment after that piece of it. But once again, it is contingent on our staffing and our student interest. So that is just a brief presentation on our summer programming and moving forward. Any questions?
Anybody have questions at all? Again, this is a plan to go forward to close the gap for our students who have lost quite a bit this year academically, and I hope that, now to say this, that I hope when the district does their strategic planning, that this is a big part of their plan. The interventions are very important. This is something that's not going to happen just in one year or one summer. This is something that's going to have to continue for at least the next three, four years. And so again, I want to thank Dr. Wood and his staff for, and the principals and staff at each of the buildings, putting in some type of a program together so we can work with our students that need the help, catch up after the shooting. Dr. Wood, thank you very much. One last item I do want to say, and it had nothing to do with the meeting itself. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve as a Board of Education member these last four years for District 202. It has been a privilege and an honor to serve our community, students, parents, teachers, school staff, and my fellow board members. Thank you again, and best wishes to all of the Plainfield Community School District. So thanks again. Mr. Rouch, that's our meeting from last Wednesday.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. Thank you again for your service. Item nine, for Action Personnel Policy and Administration Committee. Ms. Roach?
Yes, thanks, Kevin. The Personnel Policy and Administration Committee also met this past Wednesday at 6:00 PM. The first thing that we had was our Community Relations Update. Tom Hernandez reported that the Community Relations Department has finished and posted all four segments of their year-in-a-life, or their year-long life-in-a-pandemic video series. The videos capture the pandemic's impact on District 202 from the day schools closed through April 7th, when students returned to five half-days of class. The series is posted on top of the front of the district website. Also, the new Community Relations Coordinator, Kelly Larson, is, was expected to start tomorrow, Tuesday, April 27th. She comes from District 202 from the University of St. Francis, where she served in a similar capacity. And then on to the action of the committee. 9.02. It is my motion for the approval of policies to be placed on 30-day public display. Policy 5:10, equal employment opportunity in minority recruitment. Policy 5:20, workplace harassment prohibited. Policy 5:100, staff development program. Policy 7:180, prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment. And Policy 7:185, teen dating violence prohibited. That is my motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
9.03. It is my motion for the approval of 2021 technology summer workers. Hire up to 10 summer workers for up to 13 weeks. Projects to be completed include computer deployment, cleanup, and redistribution of loaned laptops from lockdown, and additional network projects. The cost projection is based on 10 workers at $11 per hour for 13 weeks. That is my motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes. Motion passes.
9.04. It is my motion for the approval of the 2021-2022 high school student handbook changes. My motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
9.05. It is my motion for the approval of the 2021-2022 middle school student handbook changes.
Heather's motion? Second. Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
9.06. It is my motion for the approval of the 2021-2022 elementary school student handbook changes.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Roach? Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes. Motion passes.
9.07. It is my motion for the intergovernmental agreement for library services from 2021 through 2023.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
And then lastly, I wanted to thank both Mike and Bob for their participation, service, and contribution to the Personnel Policy and Administration Committee this past year and previous years as well. I believe you guys were both on for a few years here, and I greatly appreciate all of your hard work with that committee.
Thank you, Heather. All right. Down on our agenda to item 12, for Action Other. And 4.01 is approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Board of Education and Plainfield Community Consolidated School District 202 and the Plainfield Association of Support Staff, IEA NEA. Section 4.6, severe and inclement weather. I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And item 12.02, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Board of Education and Plainfield Community Consolidated School District and the Plainfield Association of Support Staff, IEA NEA. Section 7.4, vacation. I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
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 Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Rouch?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
7.13. Approval of resolution regarding intent to implement full-day kindergarten for all students for the 2021-2022 school year. That is my final motion.
Day's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
We also have a lot of students that we need to recognize, a lot of students that we need to recognize. Our Students of the Year for 2021 is Jada Dixon in Culinary from Plainfield P Step, a senior. Field Storage, Auto Service, Plainfield Central High School Senior. Marissa Mashad, CNA, Plainfield Central High School Senior. Frances Rose Dizette, Early Childhood, Plainfield Central High School Senior. Elvis Lemby Landau, Computer Technology, Plainfield Central High School Senior. Fatima Abara, Fire Science, Plainfield South High School Senior. Madison Freeslag, Introduction to Health Professionals, Plainfield Central High School Senior. Tyler Love, Welding, Plainfield East High School Senior. Maxwell Barbick, Welding One, Plainfield Central High School Junior. Oh, Tyler Love, excuse me, is Plainfield East High School Senior, I apologize. Ethan Urbanowitz, CNA, Plainfield East High School Senior. Emily Rochetti, CNA, Plainfield East High School Senior. Jessica Durantz, Auto Service Two, Plainfield East High School Senior. Playona Mizarati, Certified Nursing Assistant, Senior at Plainfield South. Elise Smith, Certified Nursing Assistant, Senior at Plainfield North. Also, our National Tech Honor Society for 2021. Frances Rose Dizette, Early Childhood, Plainfield Central High School Senior. Ayat Kazmi, Medical Assistant, Plainfield South High School Junior. Emmanuel Maq, Computer Technology, Plainfield East High School Senior. Honora Nadine, Introduction to Health, Plainfield East High School Junior. Samantha Peters, Medical Assistant, Plainfield East High School Senior. Nitten Potanini, Computer Technology, Plainfield North High School Senior. Chupali Rojas, Veterinary Assistant, Plainfield East High School Senior. Emily Rochetti, CNA, Plainfield East High School Senior. Quinn Somaraco, Veterinary Assistant, Plainfield East High School Senior. Brooklyn Taylor, CNA, Plainfield East High School Senior. Itzel Vargas, CNA, Plainfield South High School Senior. Also want to acknowledge Wilco students who earned Illinois' HOSA State Conference Awards. The competition was held for the HOSA State Conference between March 14th and 19th. Each of the students, Plainfield South High School, Baturah Nadam, and Plainfield East High School, Cameron Aquinas, both seniors, competed in various categories. Baturah Nadam was awarded the Top Ten State Qualifier for Dental Science. Ayah Valdez and Cameron were awarded the Top Ten State Qualifier for their job-seeking entries. We also had Wilco students that earned the FCC LA Awards. Three students pursuing a career in early childhood education at the Wilco Career Center. Plainfield Central High School Senior Caitlin Abara competed in various categories. She was awarded the Silver Level for her Childcare Professional Notebook entry. Twelve students pursuing a career in culinary arts at Wilco Career Center have been named recipients of the FCC LA Awards. Plainfield South, Brianna Worley was awarded the Gold Level for Most Outstanding in Hospitality, Tourism, Recreation Star Event. Plainfield Central, Cynthia Sanchez, Senior, was awarded the Gold Level for her Fondue Cakes. Plainfield East, Lindsay McCoy, Senior, was awarded the Silver Level for Culinary Star. Plainfield East, Sidney Felgenhauer, Senior, was awarded the Silver Level for her Fondue Cake. Adriana, excuse me one second here, Adriana was awarded the Silver Level for their Decorated Cookie entries. Plainfield East, Senior Even Morfo was awarded the Bronze Level for his Culinary Math Entry. And Plainfield P Step, Jada Dixon, Junior, was awarded the Silver Level for her Decorated Cookie entry. And then finally, the state competition was on Monday, April 5th, and Tuesday, April 6th, and we were fortunate that Brianna Worley, Senior at Plainfield South, finished with the gold medal in that category. Brianna has created a website, she started a business. Her cupcakes are phenomenal. I'm trying to get her to make some before she leaves so I can bring it to the next board meeting. But our students achieved a lot of success. We have the CTE Graduate Profile Challenge winners, which was statewide. Over eighty new graduate profiles have been added during the past few weeks during the friendly challenge. The winning school out of all the career centers in Illinois was our Wilco Career Center. Taking first place was Plainfield South High School, and taking fourth place was Plainfield North. The Innovative Curriculum Resources Project would like to celebrate successful high school career and technical education programs throughout Illinois by highlighting the careers of CTE graduates. Over two hundred graduates are now featured in this graduate profile. Our alumni did very well. Our, just so you know, our welding program has been recognized by the state, and we are going to actually offer summer school classes for some of our students. More information will be following and sent to the Wilco parents. So to help them advance and get ready for next year. And Mr. Kerber, that is my Wilco report.
Thank you, Mr. Westphal. All right, item fourteen point zero three, update on the 2020-2021 return plan. Dr. April?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kerber. Currently, the school year, I believe we're about twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five student attendances in this year. We continue to make plans for a traditional, more traditional schedule, and a more quote-unquote "normal" school year for 2021-22. The largest update, or probably most important point right now regarding my update on the plan, is high school graduation ceremonies. Those will occur on May 22nd, that is the targeted date. We do have some contingency plans in case it rains during the morning sessions or early afternoon to move later in that day, or even to Sunday afternoon if needed. The ceremonies will be at each high school in their stadium. At this point in time, those are the plans. Also, due to capacity limits outdoors, it does look like we will need to have two in-person ceremonies. If those capacity limits change from IDPH or CDC or the State Board of Education, we can certainly allow more parents and family members to attend. It remains to be seen if those will change or not. Each high school will be communicating more details this week to their students.
Thank you, Dr. April. Any questions from the board regarding high school graduations or anything else regarding the return plan? Glad we're able to pursue in-person graduations. All your work with that and the high school principals as well, Dr. April. We have no new business this evening, so sixteen point zero one, Freedom of Information Request Status?
We have received eight Freedom of Information requests since last Board of Education meetings. Number one from Jen Weeks from Smart Local 265 for materials regarding summer building and mechanical work. Those received on April 8th due April 15th, completed April 15th. Number two, Jeff Cross, a community member for materials regarding Aramark food service bills and invoices, that was received April 13th due April 20th, completed April 19th. Number three, Aaron Voels, a community member for materials regarding employee contact information, received April 13th due April 20th, completed April 19th. Number four, Tanner, K-12 Transportation Research for materials regarding transportation contracts and expenses, received April 14th due April 21st, completed April 15th. Number five, Michelle Cole will be a community member for updated student achievement data, received April 16th due April 23, completed April 20. Number six, Helen Oliver, a community member for materials regarding postage meter leases, received April 16th due April 23rd, completed April 20. Number seven, Ryan Evans, a community member for student directory inter-information, received April 19th to April 26th, completed April 20. That one was denied. April, I'm sorry, last one. Number eight, Michelle Colby, community member for emails between Dr. April and APT membership, that was received April 20th due April 27th. Intent to deny as it was overly burdensome, was issued on April 21 with an invitation to narrow or clarify that request.
Thank you, Dr. April. And item seventeen point zero one, announcements and scheduled activities?
Our Board of Education meeting will be held remotely on Monday, May 10, 2021, 6:30 for closed session, 7:30 for public session.
Thank you, sir. And we will not need to have a second closed session, so one final item this evening. One of our traditions here in District 202 is to acknowledge the service of outgoing board members by presenting them with a handsomely engraved commemorative bell, again, as a way to thank them and recognize their service. So I have one of these that I would like to give to each of the outgoing board members. So Mike?
Thank you.
There is that for you, and I also have Dave's and Bob's as well. So got a little more hardware for you all to take with you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And again, we do have one final board meeting with you all to participate in on Wednesday night when we do the transition meeting, and welcome our new board members to join us. But again, thank you all three for your service to the district and to our students. And, you know, one of the things I think I could very clearly state about all three of you was you always have students at the heart of all of the decisions that you made and all the actions that you took, and that is what doing this work is all about. It's a thankless job oftentimes, and a lot of long volunteer work that we put in. But again, on behalf of a large community and twenty-five thousand-plus students and three thousand-plus employees, you all are to be commended, and thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Mike's second. Charlie?
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, and have a wonderful evening.